Thank you all for joining us this evening. This is the May meeting, business meeting of the Yakima School District Board of Directors. We have a very special guest with us this evening to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Diner, could you introduce your guest, please?
Board of Directors, President Rice, Superintendent Green, gives me great pleasure to introduce to you Eisenhower Senior Mary Prentice. Couple things about Mary. First off, she's the daughter of Christina Carlson and David Prentice. Mary is one of our five valedictorians this year at Eisenhower. All five of them have a 4.0 GPA, something their principal did not have or not even close. But they are wonderful kids. Mary's also our senior class ASB president. And so I'll let Mary start with the Pledge of Allegiance, okay?
Mary, whenever you're ready, just bring us to stand and tell us to begin.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mary, before you get too far away, I know it's tempting to run away from the microphone. I want to thank you for joining us tonight, and I hope that we see you in a couple of weeks at graduation.
Thank you. I look forward to graduation.
I'll bet you do. What are you, what are your plans for next year?
I plan on attending Lewis and Clark College in Portland, Oregon.
Very nice. And you're, what will you be studying?
I'm undecided because I have no idea yet. I like everything.
You know, there are adults like me that still don't know what we want to do when we grow up, so it's completely okay. I'm going to ask the rest of the board members to thank you, and they may have a question for you as well. Graciela?
Hi, Mary. My name's Graciela. Can you share with me what your favorite book is?
Oh goodness, I have a lot, but probably recently, the, my favorite book that I've read is, oh goodness, um, probably, um, goodness, uh, The Woman in the Window, probably.
Oh, I haven't read that. I'll have to check that out. Thank you for sharing, and thank you for being here today with us.
Thank you.
Raymond?
Sure, hello. My name is Raymond. I just wanted to thank you for being here tonight and leading us in Pledge Allegiance. I know that Eisenhower High School is going to miss you when you graduate. I, I just want to tell you one thing, that the research shows that people who are undecided will switch up to seven times. So that'll be a lot, a lot of exploration on your part, but we wish you the best at Lewis and Clark.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Raymond. Don?
Hi, Mary. It's always good to see you. She emceed the Mr. Ike Contest, and she's, she does a whole lot here at Eisenhower, and whatever you were majoring in, you're going to be great at it. Keep up the great work. We are proud of you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you so much.
Norm?
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for being here and doing the pledge for us, and I want to wish you well at Lewis and Clark regardless of what you do. It's a beautiful campus. I've been on it, and it's neat, it's a neat place to learn. It's a neat community. So I wish you well in your future endeavors.
Thank you.
And you may have to get used to a lot of rain, right?
Yeah, I'm ready to get some rain boots and an umbrella, which is a lot different than Yakima.
Yeah, outerwear is mostly for cold here, not for rain. Well, best of luck to you, Mary, and thank you so much for being here tonight. And I see your parents in the audience.
Thank you. I appreciate you all.
Thank you so much. Okay, next on the agenda is the land acknowledgement. I've asked Raymond Navarro to read the land acknowledgement for us tonight.
Yes. Today, the schools of the Yakima School District rest on the ancestral lands of the 14 Confederate tribes and bands of the Yakima Nation. The people of Yakima Nation inhabited more than 12 million acres across Adams, Benton, Shalan, Douglas, Franklin, Grant, Kitata, Clickitat, and Yakima Counties. Today, we honor those native peoples who are tied to the land through history, legends, and culture. We acknowledge their descendants who live in the world today. We thank the caregivers of this land who live, who have lived here and continue to live here since time immemorial. An acknowledgement is a simple and simple, powerful way to show respect and step, and a step towards correcting the stories and practices that erase Indigenous peoples' histories and culture. It also honors truth. As a school district, we will continue to build upon our relations with the Yakima Nation. Thank you.
Thank you, Raymond. Next on our agenda is Community Leadership Award. Stacy Locke is presenting.
If I could have Lisa Campbell John and Lori Kelly stand to be recognized? Please remain standing. Yakima School District Community Leadership Award is designed to honor community members for their outstanding contributions toward education through collaboration with their school district. The recipients are nominated for providing services to students, leadership, motivation, success, partnerships with local school districts, and history of service in the community. With that, Yakima School District has chosen two staff members from Yakima Valley Farmworkers Clinic that have been instrumental with the COVID-19 vaccine rollout for our Yakima School District staff. Thank you, Lisa Campbell John and Lori Kelly. Both Ms. Campbell John and Ms. Kelly invested many hours developing a successful rollout process for our staff to be vaccinated as soon as it was available. We thank them for their attention and dedication to helping provide all Yakima School District staff with this early opportunity during the pandemic. Thank you.
I want to take a moment of personal privilege and thank you myself. Because of your work, I was able to get a vaccination shot along with about 500 of my closest friends at the convention center. So thank you for everything that you've done to help this community. Next, we have Washington Association of School Administrators Student Leadership Award. Dr. Pimpleton is presenting.
I had the kids come down because I have never met them in person. We have been doing all of our work together virtual this year, but I am pleased to present the Washington Association of School Administrators Student Leadership Award to two outstanding scholars. They are both juniors at Davis. They have been instrumental leaders in the work that we have been doing around advancing equity in the Yakima School District, on our Student Advisory Council, and in our District Equity Coalition, actually leading a lot of the policy writing work that has taken place. Both of these students also participated in a summit regarding the balanced calendar in which they helped to solicit and generate some great feedback about looking at how are we going to equitably use the school days that we have allocated for the advancement of learning and the minimization of summer learning loss. So they have been really just dynamic leaders, and I have actually learned a lot from working with them. Our students can do a lot when we give them the space and the opportunity, and our district is going to be significantly improved on account of their work. They are Connor Lincoln and Cleopatra Cook.
Connor and Cleo, thank you so much for everything that you've done. In addition to being excellent scholars, you have really stepped up and helped this school district set a new direction for us, and we so much appreciate all of your work in that area. You have represented your colleagues, your fellow students very well, and represented the district very well in your out-of-district activities. So thank you so much. Okay. Next, we have a recognition program. We have a number, I mean, a lot of recognitions tonight. The first recognition is one that I've asked Norm Walker to read. It is the proclamation for Arts Education Month for the month of May.
I was thrilled to get this assignment. My entire career as a student in Yakima, as a university student and as an educator, has revolved around, among other things, visual, musical, and dramatic arts. So I am a big booster of the arts. So here's their proclamation from Yakima School District Arts Education Month, May 2021. Whereas the month of May has been recognized as Arts Education Month by many communities and school districts across the state of Washington, and whereas the arts embody much of the accumulated wisdom, intellect, and imagination of humankind, and whereas learning in the arts enhances and enriches the lives of all students, and whereas arts education teaches creative problem-solving and cultural knowledge, and offers multiple pathways to understanding for different types of learners, and whereas arts education increases connections and engagement between teachers, students, and the connected community that surrounds them. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Yakima School District Board of Directors designates the month of May 2021 as Arts Education Month, and be it further resolved that the Yakima School District Board of Directors calls on the community to celebrate and promote the arts in our schools, and to take action to provide equitable access to arts learning for all students in our learning community, dated this 18th day of May 2021.
Thank you, Norm. Next, we have a recognition for our John D. McAllister Crystal Apple Award recipients. As with everything COVID, this was a drive-through recognition earlier this month at Sarge Hubbard Park, and it was, I got to say, it was a lot of fun. But I've asked Reverend Davis to announce these recipients, and if you're here, if you could join Kirsten over here, she has your certificates, and then you want to take them out into the lobby to get photos, and then if you, if you'd like to come back, I'm going to ask you to come back through this door, okay? So Reverend Davis?
Thank you, President Rice. It is indeed an honor for me to read these names for this Crystal Apple Award. It was a great drive-through, but you know, I had to get out and greet everybody because that's just me. The first recipient was Jennifer Hernandez, eighth-grade math teacher and algebra teacher at Washington Middle School. Colleen Kalasmi, counselor, Nob Hill Elementary. Amy Marcus, sixth-grade social, uh-oh, sixth-grade social studies teacher, ASB Leadership, Washington Middle School. Kerry Pitts, Assistant Principal, Robinson Middle School. Jeffrey Ritz, photography and film teacher, A.C. Davis High School. And last but not least, Holly Woolcock, Business Communication, Computer Tech, Data Tech, and Career Choice Teacher, Stanton Academy. These are our sixth-grade teachers and administrators in the Yakima School District, and I want to thank them personally for all the work they do with our young people and our students. Thank you.
At selection committee in the past, before I was on the board, and I got to tell you, it was one of the most difficult decisions to pick, just a few out of those who were nominated, because everyone who was nominated was more than worthy of the recognition, as well as many of our teachers and staff members who are not nominated. So thank you all very much. And Kirsten, you're going to go out and get, or somebody's out there getting a photo, right? Okay, perfect. Perfect. Next, we have the Washington State Principal Scholars. I've asked Graciela to make these recognitions. And, and as before, if you're here, please get your certificate from Kirsten, and she'll direct you out to the lobby to get a photo, and if you'd like to come back in, just come back in through the door over here.
Thank you, Martha. It's my honor to recognize the Washington State Principal Scholars. Sponsored by the Washington Association of Secondary School Principals, this program provides principals with an opportunity to recognize students from the top 5% of the graduating class who have led their class in academic achievement, community service, and student leadership. From A.C. Davis High School, Caleb H. Aguilar Jr. Shawn L. Cockens. Ella J. Crowder. Madeline Crowder. Leilani B. De La O. Erica Delgado Gutierrez. Michaela A. Dodson Dance. Kylie R. Endicott. Carmen E. Fernandez. Emma M. Fisher. Charles M. Gargis. Antoine R. Gonzalez. Mackenzie K. Heliger. Riley E. Hill. Ava P. Kimmel. Sylvia E. McCluskey. Catherine N. Malcor Bañales. Lily A. Mora. And the next group of students is from Eisenhower High School. Valeria Amescua. Janelle Bombach. Alexander J. Diaz. Kayla C. Grass. Elizabeth Sonia L. Harris. Jacob T. Ebuck. Julia G. Johnson. Shia N. Johnson. Chelsea Y. Lopez. Hannah D. Martin. Carla J. Martinez. Isaac M. McDonald. Elena M. Miller. Theodore C. Miller. Mary J. Prentice. Yamileh Rojas. Alisa C. Silva. And last but not least, Samantha K. Valdez. Oops, there's more on the next page. Continuing Eisenhower High School, students Colin Chow, Jao. Nolan S. Yi. And back to Davis High School, Margaret E. O'Connor. Yariksa Perez. McKenna E. Prouse. Sofia Serano. Anna E. Stevenson. Hayden M. Tweedy. And last but not least, for real this time, Tashaila Arvia.
Washington State Honors Awards, and I asked Raymond Navarro to make this presentation.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, it's my, indeed my honor and privilege to present to you the scholars that have been recognized or received the Washington State Honors Award. The Washington State Honors Award Program was established to promote academic achievement among high school students enrolled in public and approved private schools by recognizing outstanding achievement of graduating seniors. The top 10% of Washington's eligible graduating seniors will receive a Washington State Honors Award. The identification of eligible students is determined by a cumulative high school grade point average and the demonstration of academic achievement in English language arts and mathematic assessments, which can include the College Board's Scholastic Aptitude Test, or the SAT, and the American College Test, the statewide ELA, and mathematics assessments and local assessments. To receive an award, a student must have completed at least 75% of the credits required for graduation and be enrolled in at least three academic core subjects in grade 12. So these are the top 10% in the state of Washington, as we know that this takes considerable time and effort and studying, a lot of hard work, a lot of discipline, and just the love of learning, right? And I believe also with, with strong parent support. So when we recognize these scholars, we're also recognizing their families as well for their support. So from A.C. Davis High School, Shawn Calkins. Also from Davis High School, Elia, Elia Crowder. Madeline Crowder. Erica Delgado Gutierrez. Michaela Dodson Dance. I think we heard her name on the previous award. That's awesome. Karine Estrada. Carmen Fernandez. Charles Gargis. Mackenzie Heliker. Riley Hill. Alva Kimmel. Sylvia McCluskey. Lily Mora. Yariksa Perez. McKenna Prouse. Anna Stevenson. Hayden Tweedy. And last but not least, from Davis High School, Tashaila Via. From Eisenhower High School, Kayla Grass. Jacob Iback. Julia, excuse me, Julia Johnson. Carla Martinez. Isaac McDonald. Mary Prentice. I might mispronounce this last name, I'm sorry. It's Colin? Jao? Thank you. Colin. And last but not least, from Eisenhower High School, Nolan Yi. From Yakima Online, Abigail Goodell. Adam Picasso. Jacob Rumble. And Haley Swerengin. How about one more applause for our scholars and for their families as well? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Raymond. Next, we have WIAA and WSFA State Speech and Debate Champions. Next, we have WIAA and WSFA State Speech and Debate Champions. Three of our students from Eisenhower High School. These recognitions are for students who placed up to eighth place at the state competition. In eighth place for the Lincoln Douglas Debate, Nolan Yi. In third place for impromptu speaking, Nolan Yi. And in seventh place from original oratory, Karen Miller. We also want to recognize their coaches. Brandon Darvanel, speech and debate head coach. And Stuart McCurdy, speech and debate volunteer assistant coach. Okay, before we move on to the retirees, which is a rather extensive list, I do have four other names that I'd like to share with you. These are former members of our Yakima School District family who have passed away since our last meeting. Janice Jan Shufala. Janice lived her whole life in the Yakima Valley. She graduated from A.C. Davis High School in 1967 and went on to receive her teaching degree from Central Washington University and Yakima Valley College. Jan leaves behind her three sisters, Sherry Stephen, Lynn Wilson, and Sue Shufala, and her brother Paul Shufala. Jan was preceded in death by her parents and brother Rod Shufala. She was a loving daughter of Shirley Luna Delp and Reuben E. Shufala. She was cherished by all her seven nieces and nephews, as well as 21 grandnieces and nephews. Jan Shufala. Jerry Lee Goodman. After graduating from Walla Walla High School, Jerry moved to Yakima where he settled and started his family. Jerry called Yakima his home for more than 50 years before meeting the love of his life, Linda Lane, and moving to Moxie. During Jerry's 75 years, he enjoyed working for the Yakima School District, where he retired after more than 30 years of service. He worked many positions during those years, but he really loved interacting with students and kitchen staff while working in food services distributing food to the different Yakima schools. Jerry was known for his passion for old cars. He enjoyed searching swap meets and local junkyards, looking for buried treasures, otherwise known as old cars and car parts, with his lifelong and best friend Phil Lovejoy. He loved rebuilding old cars and rebuilt more cars than we can mention. Jerry was a charter member of the Yakima Vintage Car Club, holding several board positions over the years. Car shows and rod runs were a big part of Jerry's life. He enjoyed admiring the work of others as much as he enjoyed doing the work himself. Jerry is survived by his lifelong friend Phil Lovejoy, his wife of six years Linda, children Kimberly, John, and Jennifer; extended children Becky, Edie, George; numerous grandchildren, four great-grandchildren; sisters Jeanette, Diana, Beverly, sister-in-law Pam, and many nieces, nephews, and friends. Jerry was preceded in death by both of his parents and his brother Gordon. Marilyn Gordon. Marilyn's musical education began at the University of Washington, where she met her husband Jerry in the marching band. They married in 1957, with their union blessed to have lasted 63 years. They shared a unique teaching style, but the only thing they loved more than music was each other. Marilyn's first 15 years of teaching began at the Seattle School District. She later continued to teach another 35 years in Yakima as a band and orchestra instructor. In the mid-1990s, she discovered that she had stage IV lymphatic cancer. She faced many trials and tribulations, but if you knew Marilyn, she wasn't going out without a fight. While she endured the years of radiation and chemotherapy, she still presented at seminars, organized music festivals, and conducted performances with and for the local community. In all, she educated young musicians for over 50 years. Marilyn was always a creative soul, painting ceramics, flower arranging, and decorating were always passions of hers. Her home was a focal point for family gatherings, creating music, and hosting dinner parties. Marilyn's commitment to the music community was truly mesmerizing. Marilyn is survived by her husband Jerry Gordon, two sisters, three sons, 10 grandchildren with the 11th on the way, and three great-grandchildren. Marilyn Gordon. And last but not least, Julie Marie Peterson. Julie Peterson joined the Yakima School District as a special education teacher at Washington Middle School in 1990. She moved to Eisenhower High School in 1994, again as a special education teacher. From 1995 to 2004, Julie worked for Special Education Services as an itinerant special education teacher, helping students throughout the district. Julie then moved to McClure Elementary as a special education resource room teacher and reading interventionist from 2004 to 2019. She spent her final year as a teacher at Gilbert Elementary as a special education resource room teacher. Julie, who retired last May, retired with 30 years of teaching experience. Julie Peterson. These people made a great difference in the lives of countless numbers of children. And I'd like to take just a minute to have a moment of silence to recognize them and the families and all whom they touched. Thank you very much. Is there anyone here representing Julie Peterson? Because we're recognizing retirees from last year and this year, I have Julie's plaque up here. Would you like to come and get it, or we can have somebody run it to you? We are truly sorry for your loss. Thank you, Trevor. Thank you, Kirsten. Okay. Next, we have a substantial list of retirees because we were not able to have a retiree recognition event last year because you know why. We are recognizing those folks tonight as well as this year's retirees. So we have 83 in total. The good news is, we also have a list of who's here, and we will be recognizing those who are here first, and then recognizing those who may be watching from home or watching this recording. So as with the other recognitions, if those that are being recognized could remind Kirsten and Anthony over there, we have your plaques. And as you move to the lobby, someone will take your photo, and then you're welcome to come back. And if you want to do that, you would enter back through this door. Because there are so many, the board typically breaks up this group, and we each take a chunk of names. So for the 2019-2020 school year, Rosielli, you have the first group. Just the highlighted ones this time, and then we'll come back after we get through both sets and read those to whom are not highlighted, okay?
Our first name on the list is Michael Bardz. Michael was hired on September 4, 2014, as a bus driver with the Transportation Department. Michael remained in this position for his entire career with the district. Michael retired on June 30, 2020 with nearly six years of service. Sandra Baxter. Sandra was hired on September 1, 1992, as a travel account specialist in the business office. In 1993, she moved to the Food Services Office as the Accounting Secretary. In 1997, Sandy moved to the Payroll Department as a payroll retirement specialist. Then in 2001, she moved to Human Resources as the Budget Reporting Specialist. In 2012, Sandy made her final move to Special Education Services as a Fiscal Coordinator, where she remained until her retirement. Sandy retired on September 30, 2019 with 27 years of service. Linda Beck. Linda Beck began her teaching career as a substitute teacher in Germany from 1979 to 1980. She worked as a substitute teacher in Iowa in the early 1980s before coming to Washington. Linda subbed at several districts in the Yakima Valley until 1991, when she joined the Yakima School District as a teacher at Washington Middle School. She taught Language Arts and Social Studies at Washington until 2013. Linda moved to Franklin Middle School in 2013 and remained there until her retirement. She concludes her teaching career with over 30 years as a teacher.
Okay, the next group will be read by... I'm looking at the wrong here. Raymond. Beginning with Nancy Davis.
So at this time, I'd like to recognize Nancy Davis. Nancy Davis began her teaching career in Othello as an elementary teacher in 1976. Before joining the Yakima School District in a permanent position, Nancy taught in several school districts, including Othello, North Franklin, Union Gap, and Wapto in both permanent and substitute teaching positions. She joined the Yakima School District as a fifth-grade teacher at Barge Lincoln Elementary in 2000. In 2008, Nancy moved to Whitney, where she has been a teacher and reading interventionist. She retires with over 31 years of service. Nancy Davis. Christine Gamash. Christine started her teaching career in 1999 with the Yakima School District. Her first assignment was as a special education teacher at Washington Middle School. Christine remained at Washington as a special education teacher for her entire teaching career. She taught Grade 6 through 8 and was also the department chair for special education at Washington. She retired with 21 years in education. Christine Gamash.
I think that's the last of your group that are here. That's... Is that... Are those on the yellow pages? Okay. So that's the last of your group. So because we're reading only those that are here right now, and then we'll come back to those who may be watching from home. So I have the next group. And Consuelo Madrano. Consuelo was hired on October 15, 2010, as a paraeducator at Hoover Elementary. Then in 2014, she became a speech assistant with the Special Education Department, where she remained for the rest of her career with the district. Consuelo retired on August 31, 2020 with nearly 10 years of service. Consuelo Madrano. Okay, Norm, you have the next group. Milden. Are they... None of your group is here? Okay. No, that's Dawn's. So Dawn, you have the last group for 2019-2020?
Stacy Sue. Stacy began her teaching career as a substitute teacher from 1990 to 1992. Joined the staff at Lewis and Clark Middle School from 1992 to 2000. During her time at Lewis and Clark, Stacy taught Language Arts and Social Studies. She also coordinated the Chapter 1 Reading, Migrant and Reps Program. Stacy moved to McKinley to be a first-grade teacher in 2000 before becoming the Library Media Specialist at Franklin Middle School. From 2001 to 2020, he retires with over 29 years as an educator. Philip Basquet. Philip began substitute teaching in 1996. He started his first teaching position at Barge Lincoln Elementary in 1998. From 1999 to 2002, Philip taught at Gulfview Elementary. He went back to Barge Lincoln from 2002 to 2005. Phil became assistant principal at Franklin Middle School from 2005 to 2007, then became principal at MLK Elementary from 2007 to 2013. Phil returned to the middle school level as an assistant principal of Washington from 2013 to 2015, then as assistant principal at Gulfview Elementary from 2015 to 2017. Phil completed his career as the principal at Discovery Lab from 2017 to 2020. He retired with over 23 years as an educator. Lisa Wedman. Lisa was hired on September 1, 1990, as a custodian at Davis High School. In 1999, he moved to Martin Luther King Elementary as the head custodian. In 2017, he became the head custodian at Discovery Lab, where he remained until his retirement. Leslie retired on August 31, 2019 with 29 years of service.
Okay, now we'll move to this year's retirees who are in attendance. And I have the first group. Charles Abhold. Charles was hired on June 29, 1992, as a custodian at Washington Middle School. In 1997, Charles became the head custodian at Washington, where he remained until 2017. He then moved to Eisenhower High School as the lead custodian, where he remained until his retirement. Charles also coached a variety of sports at Washington during his time there. Charles retired on February 28th, 2021 with nearly 29 years of service. Ann Berg. Ann began her teaching career in 1975 as a middle school teacher in Salem, Oregon. She taught in Albany, Oregon from 1975 to 1977. Ann moved to the West Valley School District and taught there from 1977 to 1981. She substitute taught in the early 1990s before taking a position with the Natchez School District as a high school teacher from 1994 to 2004. Ann accepted her first administrative position as principal of St. Paul Cathedral School in Yakima from 2004 to 2008. She became principal of Gilbert Elementary in 2008. Ann returned to the classroom in 2015 as a teacher in the Open Doors Satellite Program. Ann will retire from the field of education with nearly 32 years of experience. Robert Braun. And he brought his phone sharing section. Bob Braun began his career as a physical education and science teacher with the Minnetonka County School District in Rupert, Idaho from 1981 to 1987. He substituted from 1987 to 1989. In 1992, Bob taught physical education at Riverside Christian School in Yakima. He left Riverside Christian in 2002 and accepted a position with the Yakima School District. He taught physical education first at Adams Elementary, but then moved to Nob Hill Elementary, where he remained until his retirement. Bob will retire with over 35 years of teaching experience. Barbara Clark. I see a lot of names on this list of people that I've known throughout the years through PTA and otherwise. Barbara Clark started her first teaching job at Davis High School in 1992 as a PE and Study Skills Teacher. She moved to Wilson in 1994, teaching both PE and Home and Family Living until 1999. Lewis and Clark Middle School was her next school, where she was part of the exploratory team, teaching family and consumer science. In 2007, she returned to teaching PE, this time at Washington Middle School. Barbara completed her career as an elementary PE teacher at McClure Elementary from 2011 to 2021. Barbara retired in March of 2021 with over 28 years as a teacher. Rosielli, you have the next group.
Christopher Cook. Christopher Cook was a substitute teacher for the Yakima School District from 1981 to 1985. He became a PE and Social Studies teacher at Davis High School for the 1985 to 1986 school year. Chris spent a couple of years at OIC, working on the key OIC program before moving to the alternative school. He spent many years teaching a variety of subjects at Stanton Academy. Chris moved to Eisenhower in 2003, where he has been a teacher in the Kid Ed Alternative Program. Chris will retire with over 38 years of teaching experience.
Raymond, do you have the next group?
Yes. Yvonne Harrington. Yvonne began her teaching career in Emity, Oregon as an elementary resource room teacher from 1981 to 1986. She re-entered the teaching field as a substitute teacher in the Yakima School District in 2003. She signed a contract with the district in 2004 as a special education teacher at Washington Middle School. She has been at Washington since 2004 as a special education resource room teacher. Yvonne also spent some time teaching Read 180 at Washington. She will retire with over 22 years in the field of education. Arnold Bill Coons. Bill began his career as a music teacher in Canton and Sepulah, Oklahoma from 1975 to 1979. He joined the Yakima School District in 1982. From 1982 to 1993, Bill taught music at various elementary, middle, and high schools in the Yakima School District. He became the band director at Eisenhower High School in 1993. He was the elementary music teacher at Gilbert Elementary from 2002 to 2015. In 2015, he became an itinerant music teacher, serving several schools in the district. Bill will retire with over 40 years of experience as a music teacher.
Dawn, you have the next group.
Randy Knoll. Randy began her career in education in 1984 as a learning specialist with the Wheeler County ESD in Oregon. In 1986, she became a middle school, middle and high school special education teacher with the Golden Dale School District. From 1995 to 1998, Randy was a special education teacher with the ESD 112 in Vancouver, Washington. He joined the Yakima School District in 1995 at the alternative school and the detention program. From 1998 to 2019, Randy taught in various special education teaching positions at Washington Middle School. He joined Davis High School in 2019 as a special education teacher. Randy will retire with 37 years of experience. Cindy Olivas. Cindy began her first teaching position at the Toponish School District in 1999 as a special education SST teacher. He moved to Union Gap School District in 2001 and taught a middle school special education resource room. From 2002 to 2005, Cindy was a high school special education resource room teacher in Wapto. He joined the Yakima School District in 2005 as a special education SST teacher at Ridgeview Elementary. In 2012, Cindy moved to Wilson Middle School, where she taught both self-contained and resource rooms until 2018. He joined the Washington Middle School staff in 2018 as a special education self-contained classroom teacher. Cindy retires this year with 22 years as a special education teacher. Thank you, Cindy.
And Norm, you have the last group.
And only one of mine is here tonight. I have David Walter. Dave Walter began his teaching career in 1988 as a music teacher for the Metow Valley School District, where he taught both middle and high school music. In 1989, he joined the Highland School District, teaching music at Highland High School and Titan Middle School until 1992. He moved to the West Valley High School as band director from 1992 to 2000. Dave joined the Yakima School District in 2000 to teach at Eisenhower High School. Dave has taught band, orchestra, and other instrumental classes at Eisenhower until his retirement. He will retire with 33 years as a music teacher.
Okay. So let us thank the retirees who have been with us this evening.
Hold on. Did we miss one from the first group? It's Sonya Duncan here. I thought I saw you there. Okay, so she's out of the first group.
It's yours.
Do I just read it?
Go ahead.
Oh, just go ahead and read it. I had the pleasure of working with Sonya several years at Whitney. Sonya Duncan started as a substitute teacher with the Yakima School District. She worked in this role from 1994 to 1996. In 1996, Sonya joined the Yakima School District as a speech-language pathologist. She remained in this position with the Special Education Services Department until her retirement in 2020. Sonya retires with over 25 years of service in the field of education.
Our apologies, Sonya. Okay. Now we will move to those who have chosen to join us either remotely or virtually. So back to 2019, the 2019-20 retirees. Rosielli, you have the first group.
Flora Agbesit or Agbisi. Flora was hired on September 4, 1990 as a para educator at Whitney Elementary School. During Flora's entire career with the district, she remained as a para at Whitney. Flora retired on August 30th, 2019 with 29 years of service. Maria Aguirre. Maria Aguirre began her teaching career in 2005 with the Toponish School District. She joined the Yakima School District in 2010 as a special education preschool teacher. Maria worked at Barge Lincoln Elementary from 2010 to 2012, and Adams Elementary from 2012 to 2020. She will retire with nearly 15 years in education. Letitia Bryant. Letitia Bryant began her career with the Yakima School District at Garfield Elementary from 1988 to 1992. At Garfield, she was both a first and second grade teacher and school counselor. Letitia worked at, as a school counselor for the rest of her career at the following schools. Robertson from 1992 to 1996. Washington from 1996 to 1997. Roosevelt from 1997 to 2000. Discovery Lab from 2000 to 2008. MLK from 2008 to 2014. Eisenhower, 2014 to 2018. And Hoover, 2018 to 2020. Letitia concluded her career in education with over 29 years of experience. Kelly Carl. Kelly Carl started her first teaching assignment as a special education teacher in Walla Walla from 1980 to 1981. The following year, she taught first grade for the Finley School District. In 1982, Kelly joined the Yakima School District at Roosevelt Elementary School as a special education teacher. She moved, she moved to Castle Vale Elementary School as a primary special education teacher from 1986 to 1988. Her next assignment was at Gilbert Elementary from 1988 to 1990. Kelly became a first grade teacher at McKinley Elementary in 1990 and stayed in that position until 2014. Her final six years with the district were at Gilbert Elementary as a first grade teacher. Kelly retires with over 39 years as a teacher. Michael Carpenter. Mike was hired on September 2, 1997 as a bus driver with the Transportation Department. Michael remained in this position for his entire career with the district. Michael retired on August 30th, 2020 with 23 years of service. Douglas Cheatham. Doug Cheatham began his career in education with Educational Service District 105 in Yakima in 1990. He worked for the ESD 105 until 1996 as a liaison coordinator and counselor. Doug moved to the Yakima School District in 1996 as a school counselor. He worked at Stanton Academy for his entire career with the Yakima School District. He retires with over 30 years of experience in school counseling. Barbara Cleveland. Barbara Cleveland began her teaching career as a substitute teacher for the Yakima School District in 1990. In 1991, she became a math and science teacher at Wilson Middle School. She remained at Wilson until 2012. For the 2012 to 13 school year, Barbara was a math professional development specialist at the District Resource Center. Since 2013, Barbara has, has been a TOEFL math specialist. She retired with nearly 30 years of service.
Sonya Duncan. Okay. I thought she did Cleveland. Okay, all righty, sorry. Delilah Gonzalez. Delilah was hired on November 13, 2006 as a special education para educator at Ridgeview Elementary. Delilah remained in this position for her entire career with the district. Delilah retired on August 31st, 2020 with nearly 14 years of service. Renee Hargrove. Renee began with the Yakima School District as a substitute teacher in 2007 and 2008. She taught for the Wapto School District for 2008, 2009, and for the Mount Adams School District from 2009 to 2012. Renee returned to Yakima as a substitute teacher, teacher from 2012 to 2014. She joined the Adams staff as a contracted teacher in 2014 and remained at Adams until her retirement. At Adams, Renee taught both second and third grades. She retired with nearly 11 years of teaching experience. Lori Harmon Willard. Lori started her teaching career as a teacher for, for the Marysville School District from 2086 to 2088. She worked for the Zilla School District from 2088 to 2091. She then started a long stint as a math teacher for the Seela School District from 1992 to 19, to 2019. Lori joined the Yakima School District in 2019 for just one year as a math teacher, split between Davis High School and Eisenhower High School. She retired with 33, 33 years of teaching experience. Jan Herring. Jan was hired in August, on August 29, 2011 as a preschool para educator at Ellens Elementary. Jan remained in this position for her entire career with the district. Jan retired on June 30th, 2020 with nearly nine years of service. Charles Hines. Charles spent many years as a firefighter, which prepared him to be a CTE instructor for the Yakima School District. He joined the Yakima School District at YV Tech as a CTE firefighting instructor in 2017. He retired in 2020 after teaching on a part-time basis at YV Tech for three school years. Nadine Hudson. Nadine began her career in education in 1989 with the Yakima School District. Her first teaching position was at Hoover Elementary as a special education resource room teacher. She stayed at Hoover for two school years. Nadine moved to Roosevelt Elementary in 1991 as a special education resource room teacher. She stayed at Roosevelt for the next 29 years. Many of those years, she taught second grade. Nadine retired from the Yakima School District with 31 years of service as a teacher. Mark Hummel. Mark began his career as, in education as a teacher Mark began his career in education as a teacher for the Oak Harbor School District in nineteen eighty. He taught and coached for the Plummer Worley School District in Idaho from nineteen eighty-one to nineteen eighty-five. Mark became a principal for the La Crosse School District in Washington from nineteen eighty-five to nineteen ninety. He moved to the Yakima area and became the principal at Titan Middle School from nineteen ninety to two thousand. In two thousand, he became the principal of East Valley High School in Yakima, then joined the Yakima School District as principal of Robertson Elementary from two thousand and nine to two thousand and twenty. Mark retired with forty years in the field of education.
Thank you, Raymond. I have the next group. Vernon Jacoby. Vernon was hired on August twenty-second, nineteen eighty-three, as a custodian at the Broadway School. The next year, he took the job of carpenter in the maintenance department. He held this position for many years, and in two thousand, he became the locksmith for the maintenance department. Next, in two thousand and nine, Vernon was promoted to the maintenance lead position. Then in two thousand thirteen, he became the maintenance and operations supervisor and was in this position for the remainder of his career. Vernon retired on March thirty-first, two thousand twenty, with nearly thirty-seven years of service. Wanda Justperson. Wanda was hired on August twenty-eighth, two thousand six, as a special education para educator at Ridgeview Elementary. Wanda remained in this position for her entire career with the district. Wanda retired on June thirty, two thousand twenty, with nearly fourteen years of service. Gary Kerpke White. Gary Kerpke White spent many years as a welder before using that experience to join the Yakima School District. He became a C T E welding instructor at Eisenhower High School in two thousand and five. Gary stayed at Eisenhower High School in the same position for the remainder of his teaching career. He retired in two thousand twenty with fifteen years of experience as a C T E teacher. Deborah Lavis. Deb Lavis began her first year in teaching in nineteen seventy-six in Burleson, Texas, as a first-grade teacher where she taught for one year. She joined the Yakima School District in nineteen eighty-four as a music teacher at Adams Elementary. She was a kindergarten teacher at both Ridgeview and Broadway Elementary Schools from nineteen eighty-five to two thousand. She worked for four years at Robertson Elementary as an elementary teacher and reading coach. From two thousand and four to two thousand and six, Deb worked at Gilbert Elementary as a math coach and C S R facilitator. She started her first administrative position in two thousand and six as an assistant principal at Franklin Middle School. Deb became the principal at Discovery Lab in two thousand seven and stayed until two thousand and eleven. She has been the principal at McClure Elementary since two thousand and eleven. Deb retires from her career in education with over thirty-six years of service. Mike Martin. Mike Martin began his teaching career as a music teacher in North Dakota in nineteen seventy-six. He taught for ten years in North Dakota before moving to Montana, where he taught for twelve years. Mike worked as a teacher for the Grand Cooley Dam School District from nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand and six. He taught for the Tophamish School District from two thousand and six to two thousand and eight. He joined the Yakima School District as a music teacher in two thousand and eight. And during his twelve years with the Yakima School District, Mike taught at the School of the Arts, Eisenhower, Lewis and Clark, and various elementary schools. He retired with nearly thirty-eight years of teaching experience. Cindy McAllister. Cindy McAllister began her teaching career in nineteen ninety-nine with the Yakima School District. Her first-year position was as a part-time kindergarten teacher at Barge Lincoln Elementary School. After one year at Barge Lincoln, Cindy moved to Ridgeview Elementary for a full-time kindergarten teaching position. She remained at Ridgeview for the next twenty years as a kindergarten teacher. God bless her. Cindy retired in two thousand twenty with over twenty years of experience as a kindergarten teacher. Cynthia McFarland. Cynthia McFarland spent her first year teaching in nineteen ninety-eight as a substitute teacher for the Yakima School District, Highland School District, and West Valley School District. In nineteen ninety-nine, she was hired by the Yakima School District at McClure Elementary. Cynthia remained at McClure her entire career with the Yakima School District. During her twenty-one years at McClure Elementary, Cynthia taught special education classes, including a K-one self-contained and developmental kindergarten. She retired with over twenty-one years of teaching experience. Steve McKenna. Steve McKenna began his career in education in nineteen eighty-five as a history and social studies teacher at Davis High School. He remained in this position until two thousand and twelve. During his time at Davis High School, Steve was also the history department head and I B coordinator. In two thousand and twelve, Steve left the classroom to become the Yakima Education Association president. He remained in that position until his retirement in two thousand and twenty. Steve retired with over thirty-four years in education. Okay, that's the end of my section, Norm.
Gerald Milton. Gerald was hired on August twenty-sixth, nineteen ninety-six, as a custodian at Roosevelt Elementary. He remained there until two thousand four, when he moved to Garfield Elementary as the head custodian. Then in two thousand seventeen, Gerald moved to Nob Hill as the head custodian, where he remained for the rest of his career. Gerald retired on February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty, with over twenty-three years of service. Bonnie Mount. Bonnie Mount spent her first years teaching as a substitute teacher in Melbourne, Australia, from nineteen seventy-four to nineteen eighty-two, and then in La Conner, Washington, and Anacortes, Washington, nineteen eighty-two to eighty-three. In nineteen eighty-nine, Bonnie began substitute teaching for the Yakima School District. She accepted a one-year position at Nob Hill Elementary for the nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand school year. In two thousand, she became the elementary P E teacher at Whitney Elementary, or she remained for the next twenty years. And I can add, she was an absolute delight to work with at Whitney. Bonnie retired with over twenty-nine years of teaching experience. Jean Noble. Jean Noble began her teaching career as a substitute teacher for the Yakima School District in nineteen ninety-one. She taught at McKinley Elementary from nineteen ninety-two to two thousand six. While at McKinley, Jean taught second grade and a third, fourth looping class. In the two thousand six oh seven school year, Jean worked as the day reporting teacher at the Juvenile Detention Center. From two thousand seven to two thousand eighteen, she taught several different subjects at Stanton Academy. For her final two years, Jean went back to juvenile detention as a teacher with Y S D's satellite programs. She retired with over twenty-eight years as a teacher. Gilma Openoglu. Gilma Openoglu joined the Yakima School District for her first teaching job in two thousand four. She started at Robertson Elementary School as a kindergarten teacher. Gilma remained in this position for twelve years. In two thousand sixteen, Gilma remained at Robertson, but transitioned to the position of reading interventionist. She was the reading interventionist until her retirement in two thousand twenty. Gilma retired from teaching with over sixteen years of service. Stephen Oliver. Stephen was hired on December one, nineteen ninety-one, as a custodian at Eisenhower High School. Later, he moved to Washington Middle School and then to Stanton Alternative, before finally moving to Barge Lincoln Elementary in nineteen ninety-seven. Stephen remained as a custodian at Barge Lincoln for the remainder of his career. Stephen retired on February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty, with over twenty-eight years of service. Catherine Ortoff. Catherine Ortoff started her career as a substitute teacher for the Tophamish School District in nineteen eighty. From nineteen eighty-two to two thousand three, Catherine worked as a certified teacher for the Tophamish School District. She was hired in two thousand three by the Yakima School District as a certified teacher, split between McClure and Roosevelt. From two thousand four to two thousand seven, Catherine worked at the Math Resource Center. She moved to Nob Hill as a second-grade teacher in two thousand seven and stayed in that position until her retirement in two thousand twenty. Catherine retired with over thirty-seven years of teaching experience. Julie Peterson. Julie Peterson joined the Yakima School District as a special education teacher at Washington Middle School in nineteen ninety. She moved to Eisenhower High School in nineteen ninety-four, again as a special education teacher. From nineteen ninety-five to two thousand four, Julie worked for Special Education Services as an itinerant special education teacher, helping students throughout the district. Julie then moved on to McClure Elementary as a special education resource room teacher and reading interventionist from two thousand four to two thousand nineteen. She spent her final year as a teacher at Gilbert Elementary as a special education resource room teacher. Julie retired with thirty years of teaching experience. Jacqueline Petropolis. Jacqueline Petropolis began teaching as a substitute for the Yakima and Seela School Districts from nineteen eighty-five to nineteen ninety-two. She taught for the Seela School District from nineteen ninety-two to nineteen ninety-six. A few years later, she came back to Yakima as a substitute during the two thousand three oh four school year. She joined the Yakima School District as a full-time special education teacher at Davis High School in two thousand four. Jacqueline remained at Davis for the remainder of her career. She retired with over twenty years of teaching experience. Gina Pistaresi Marcus. Gina Pistaresi Marcus started her teaching career in nineteen eighty-one with the Tophamish School District, first as a substitute, then as a contracted teacher. She joined the Yakima School District as the reading coach at Hoover Elementary from nineteen ninety-two to two thousand four. Gina moved to Nob Hill Elementary in two thousand four, where she was a reading coach and then instructional facilitator. She stayed at Nob Hill until two thousand fourteen, when she moved on to McClure Elementary. Gina remained at McClure as the instructional facilitator until her retirement. Gina retired in two thousand twenty with over thirty-seven years of teaching. Jackie Purcell. Jackie Purcell began her career as a speech therapist in nineteen eighty-three in Custer County, Montana. She worked for the Walla Walla School District from nineteen eighty-five to nineteen eighty-seven, then Clayellum Roseland School District from nineteen eighty-seven to nineteen eighty-eight. Between nineteen eighty-eight and nineteen ninety-eight, Jackie worked as a speech-language pathologist for the Yakima, Ellensburg, and Kidata School Districts. In nineteen ninety-eight, Jackie joined the Yakima School District full-time. She remained a speech-language pathologist for Y S D since then. She retired in two thousand twenty with over thirty-three years of experience.
Thank you, Norm. Sean?
Barb Smith. Barb began her career as a school psychologist in nineteen ninety-four as a school psychologist interim in Grandview. In nineteen ninety-five, she became a certified school counselor for the Tophamish School District. She worked in this capacity from nineteen ninety-five to twenty oh three. A year later, she joined the Yakima School District as a school psychologist. She served the students of the Yakima School District from two thousand three to twenty twenty. When she retired, Barb retired with twenty-five years of school district experience as a school psychologist. Richard Shunn. Richard was hired on April seventh, twenty eleven, as a groundskeeper in the maintenance department. Richard remained in this position for his entire career with the district. Richard retired on February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty, with nearly nine years of service. Catherine Stabler. Kathy was hired on September first, twenty oh six, as a fund account for accounts payable in the financial service department. Kathy has remained in that position for her entire career with the district. Kathy retired on October thirty-first, twenty nineteen, with over thirteen years of service. Michael Stone. Michael began his teaching career in nineteen seventy-nine in the state of Arizona. He taught at several school districts in Arizona until nineteen eighty-nine. From nineteen ninety to nineteen ninety-three, Mike taught on Annette Island, Alaska. He moved on to teach in Arlington, Washington, until nineteen ninety-nine. Mike joined the Yakima School District in nineteen ninety-nine, initially as a teacher at Discovery Lab. He taught at Eisenhower High School for a short time, but spent the remainder of his career at Stanton teaching English, and most recently, as an instructional facilitator. Mike retired with over thirty-four years in education. Judy Strower. Judy began her school teaching career in Seattle in nineteen ninety-five. She taught in Seattle until two thousand six. Judy spent several years substituting substitute teaching before joining the Yakima School District in two thousand twelve. Her first position was at Discovery Lab as a half-time library media specialist and half-time instructional facilitator. In two thousand thirteen, Judy joined the Gilbert staff as a full-time library media specialist. She retired in two thousand twenty with over twenty years as an educator. Kate Tate. Kate started her career in education as a substitute teacher in nineteen ninety-two. She joined the Yakima School District in nineteen ninety-three as a district-wide art teacher. She remained in this position for four years. Kate became a school counselor, starting in nineteen ninety-seven, first at Discovery Lab. The majority of her years were spent as a high school counselor at Eisenhower High School. She retired in two thousand twenty with over twenty-six years in the field of education. Deanna Walberg. Deanna was hired on October nineteenth, nineteen ninety-two, as the manager of the district graphics center located at Davis High School. Deanna remained in this position until twenty oh six, when she moved to Central Services to work in the financial service department. In two thousand eight, she moved to state and federal programs as a secretary, and then in twenty oh nine, she became the secretary for the Math Science Warehouse at the Resource Center. In two thousand seventeen, she was transferred to the secretary position at the Professional Development Center, where she remained until her retirement. Deanna retired on August thirty-first, two thousand twenty, with nearly twenty-eight years of service.
Let's have a round of applause for all of last year's retirees. We had a total of forty-nine retirees for the two thousand nineteen-twenty twenty school year, with a combined years of service of one thousand two hundred and sixteen years. We truly apologize for not being able to recognize these folks last year, but are very happy to be able to do that this year. Now we'll move on to the two thousand and twenty-twenty one retirees. And I have the first group. Ernest Abdo. Ernie Abdo began his first teaching job at Garfield Elementary School as a first-grade teacher in nineteen eighty-eight. In nineteen ninety-six, he transferred to Gilbert Elementary, where he taught second and third grades until two thousand and four. Mr. Abdo taught at Robertson Elementary until two thousand and eleven, then McKinley from two thousand eleven to two thousand fourteen. He returned to Garfield Elementary in two thousand fourteen, completing his career as a second-grade teacher. Ernie retired in January two thousand twenty-one with over thirty-two years of teaching experience. Betsy Bardwell. Betsy Bardwell began her teaching career in 1988. She accepted her first teaching position at Robertson Elementary with the Yakima School District. Betty remained at Robertson for her entire teaching career. During her time at Robertson she taught nearly every grade level. Betty will retire this year with almost thirty-three years of teaching experience. Gloria Beltran. Gloria was hired on May 30, 1996 as a para educator at Adams Elementary. She spent her entire career as a para educator at Adams, working mostly with bilingual students and programs. Gloria retired on June 10, 2021 with twenty-five years of service. And... Graciela, you have the next group.
Linda Cummins. Linda was hired on November 14, 1991 as a secretary for the Athletics Activities and Intramurals Department. In 1996 she became the office manager at Davis High School where she remained until 2000. She then became a secretary for the Teaching and Learning Department and in 2004 moved to the State and Federal Programs Department. Then in 2017 she made her final move and became the office manager for ancillary programs where she remained until her retirement. Linda retired on August 31, 2021 with nearly thirty years of service. Donna Devor. Donna was hired on October 19, 1998 as an assistant cook at Robertson Elementary. After moving to McKinley Elementary in 1999 she moved to McClure Elementary in 2000 as a cook. She remained there until 2013 when she moved to Adams Elementary. Then in 2018 she moved one last time to Robertson Elementary where she remained until her retirement. Donna retired on April 2, 2021 with over twenty-two years of service. Denise Fant. Denise was hired on August 17, 2009 as the library secretary at Washington Middle School. Denise remained in this position for her remaining time with the district. She also worked in the district from 1974 to 1984 in various office positions. Denise retired on July 30, 2001 with twelve years of service. Kimberly Faitash. Kimberly Faitash begun her teaching career as an instructor at Yakima Valley Community College from 1976 to 81. She accepted a position teaching English at Wilton Middle School in 1982. In 1986 Kim moved to a high school English teacher position at Eisenhower High School. She moved to MLK Elementary in 2000 as a reading coach, later moving to McClure in the same position. In 2008 Kim moved to Ridgeview Elementary where she served as a reading coach and instructional facilitator. Her next stop was at Garfield Elementary in 2012 as a reading interventionist and then to Gilbert Elementary as reading interventionist from 2013 to 2021. Kim will retire with over forty-three years of experience in education. Kathy Fries. Kathy began her teaching career in 1997 with the Yakima School District, first as a substitute, then as a contracted teacher at McClure Elementary. She was a teacher and reading instructional coach with the Wapato School District from 1998 to 2011. Kathy returned to the Yakima School District in 2011 as a P-12 literacy program manager, a position she held for four years. She has since been the reading interventionist at MLK Elementary since 2016. Kathy will retire with over twenty-two years in education. Colleen Gage. Colleen was hired on November 4, 2005 as a teacher at Adams Elementary and then in 2010 she moved to McKinley Elementary. She taught third, fourth, and fifth grades and special education. Prior to this she was a substitute teacher in the district beginning in 1991. In 2014 Colleen resigned as a teacher and became a para educator at Nob Hill Elementary where she remained until her retirement. Colleen retired on September 18, 2020 with nearly fifteen years of service.
Raymond?
Aurelio Garcia Jr. Aurelio began his career in education with the Yakima School District in 1987. He taught at Jefferson, Martin Luther Keene, and Robertson from 1987 to 1998. Aurelio joined the ESD 105 from 1999 to 2013. During that time he worked as a share 105 trainer, education tech, training coordinator, and regional arts education coordinator. He returned to the Yakima School District as an art teacher at Washington Middle School in 2013. Since 2014 Aurelio has been an instructional technology facilitator, TOSA or TOSA. He will retire with over thirty-three years in the field of education. Tammy Grant. Tammy was hired on April 13, 2004 as an assistant cook at Wilson Middle School. A few months later she moved to Ridgeview Elementary where she remained as assistant cook until 2009. She then moved to Nob Hill Elementary and became the finishing cook. The following year in 2010 she moved to Whitney Elementary as the cook manager where she remained until her retirement. Tammy returned on September 30, 2020... Excuse me, she retired on September 30, 2020 with over sixteen years of service. Kenneth Stee Heims. Steve, let's see, started his teaching career in 1972 as a roving PE teacher and coach in Yuma, Arizona. He was a fifth grade teacher and coach in Roseburg, Oregon from 1978 to 1980. Steve joined the Yakima School District in 1986 as elementary physical education teacher. During his many years with the Yakima School District, Steve taught physical education at Adams, Barge, McClure, and Gilbert. He will retire with over forty-three years of experience as a teacher. Karen Hovis. Karen was hired on April 16, 2013 as the director of the District Data Center. Karen remained in this position for her entire career with the district. Karen retired on June 30... Will retire, right? On June 30, 2021 with over eight years of service. Valerie Klingel Smith. Valerie was hired on November 11, 2014 as the payroll, benefits, and employee safety programs manager. Valerie remained in this position for her entire career with the district. Valerie retired on August 31, 2021 with nearly seven years of service.
Thank you Raymond. Don?
Robert Oliphant. Robert began his teaching career with the Yakima School District in 1984 as a substitute teacher. He was hired as an elementary physical ed teacher in 1985, teaching both Jefferson and McClure. In 1987 Bob landed at Borg Lincoln Elementary as a third grade teacher, a position he stayed in until 2001. He returned to teaching elementary physical education in 2001, this time at McKinley Elementary where he stayed until 2021. Bob will retire with over thirty-six years as a teacher. Florence Peterson. Florence began her career in education as a substitute teacher from 2004 to 2006 in Seela, West Valley, and Wapato School Districts. He joined the Yakima School District as a contract teacher in 2006. Florence spent her entire career with the Yakima School District as the drama teacher and director at Eisenhower High School. He will retire this year with over fifteen years of experience as a teacher. Janet Roerich. Janet was hired on October 5, 1990 as the purchase and facilitate facility rental secretary. In 1991 she moved to the position of migrant records clerk. Then in 1995 she moved to Lewis and Clark Middle School as an ASB secretary and in 1997 became the office manager there. After working for seventeen years at Lewis and Clark Janet moved back to Central Services in 2012 to become the Skywood Student Record Supervisor where she remained until her retirement. Janet retired on October 16, 2020 with thirty years of service. Nancy Smart. Nancy started her career in the field of education as a teacher enroller in North Dakota from 1997 to 1975. 1974 to 1975. He joined the Yakima School District in 1989 as a communications disorder specialist. Over the years he has served many Yakima School District students as a speech and language pathologist and has been the district's audiologist, auditalogist for many years. Nancy retired with nearly thirty years of service.
Mark Sobolik. I've known Mark Sobolik since he was seventeen years old and I'm going to add a little extra since we've been here so long anyway. Mark and Sobolik and I were teammates on the University of Washington men's volleyball team when he was an undergraduate and I was a graduate. Mark began his teaching career as a teacher at Washington Middle School in 1983. During his twenty-five years at Washington Mark taught mathematics, science, and computer technology classes to middle school students. In 2008 he took a teaching position at Yakima Online where he has remained until his retirement. Mark will retire with thirty-eight years of teaching experience. Adalita Starr. Adalita Starr took her first teaching job in 1999 at Ridgeview Elementary. During her time at Ridgeview she taught second and fifth grades. Adalita moved to Adams Elementary from 2004 to 2007 in the role of assistant to the principal. Garfield Elementary was her next assignment where she taught fourth and fifth grades until 2010. Adalita moved to Hoover Elementary in 2010 and has been a classroom teacher, reading, ELL coordinator, and reading and math interventionist during her time there. She will retire with twenty-two years of experience in the field of education. Carla Swanson. Carla was hired on April 22, 1991 as a word processing specialist. In 1994 she became the Evaluation Center Secretary and then moved to be the Athletics-In Service Secretary in 1996. Carla remained in this position until 2004 when she became the office manager in the Academic Assessment Office. Then in 2016 Carla became the office manager for the Technology Services Department where she remained until her retirement. Carla retired on April 30, 2021 with thirty years of service. Louise Willett. Lou Willett began her career as a school counselor with the Yakima School District in 1983. She spent her entire career as an elementary school counselor. During her first ten years Lou served students at Barge Lincoln, Robertson, and Stanton. Lou took a counseling position at Gilbert Elementary in 1998 and remained as the counselor at Gilbert for twenty-three years. She will retire this year with over thirty-three years of school counseling experience. Michael Wright. Michael was hired on August 16, 2010 as a custodian at Davis High School. Michael remained in this position for his entire career with the district. He retired in February 28, 2021 with over ten years of service. Tamara Ziegler. Tamara was hired on September 1, 2004 as the Teaching and Learning Secondary Education Secretary. In 2005 she moved to the Academic Assessment Department as the Discipline Database Specialist. Then in 2010 she became the registrar at Stanton Academy where she remained until her retirement. Tamara retired on December 25, 2020 with over sixteen years of service.
Thank you Norm. This was an amazing group of retirees. There were thirty-four in total for this calendar year with a combined years of service of nine hundred and seventeen years. Between these two years we have two thousand one hundred and thirty-three years of service amongst our retiree corps. Congratulations to all of them. They truly have touched thousands of lives throughout their careers. We have one more recognition and this one is very special to the board. This will be the last business meeting for the executive assistant for the superintendent Jennifer Baird. Could I ask Jennifer to kind of wander on up here? Jennifer joined the Yakima School District in 2013 when she moved, her family moved from Missouri to Yakima. And we have had the pleasure of working with Jennifer since 2013. Her family is now moving back to Missouri. Jennifer will be working for the Missouri Association of School Boards, right? And we wish her the absolute very best of luck to her and her family. Jennifer, thank you for your years of service to the Yakima School District. None of us could have done the job that we do without your support. And we managed to keep it a surprise. Thank you Barb for telling her that she couldn't leave. Okay. Next we have Yakima Treaty Day Proclamation. Superintendent Green?
Thank you Director Rice. It's my pleasure to read the Yakima Public Schools Proclamation on the Yakima Nation Treaty Day, especially honored by this as this is the first proclamation that will announce this new day of celebration within the Yakima School District. It reads as follows. Whereas Yakima School District recognizes that the indigenous peoples were the original occupants of lands that would later become known as the Americas and whereas First Americans, Native Americans, and Alaska Native have helped shape the future of Washington and the United States through every turn of our history. Whereas as First Americans, Native Americans, and Alaska Native have helped shape the future of Washington and the United States through every turn of our history. And whereas Yakima School District Office of Indian Education provides services for Native American and Alaska Native students such as tracking student data, coaching and mentoring students, advocating in our schools and community, promoting student participation, connecting students and their families to community resources, promoting engagement in cultural activities, and serving as liaison to interface with the fourteen Confederate tribes and bands of the Yakima Nation. And whereas five hundred and seven students in the Yakima School District identify as Native American or Alaska Native and whereas we serve all indigenous students and recognize their cultural heritage. And whereas Native Americans and Alaska Natives have moving stories of tragedy, triumph, and resilience that need to be shared. stories of tragedy, triumph, and resilience that need to be shared with future generations; and whereas our community is stronger because of the diversity of our population; and whereas inclusion is a core value of our district, and the school board has a responsibility to oppose the systemic racism towards indigenous people in Washington and the United States, which perpetuates high rates of poverty and income inequality, exacerbating disproportionate health, education, and social crisis; and whereas the school board promotes policies and practices that reflect the experiences for Native Americans and Alaska Natives to ensure greater access and opportunity and honor our country's indigenous roots, history, and contributions; and whereas the school board promises to engage in consultation through a collaborative dialogue with the fourteen Confederate tribes and bands of the Yakima Nation; and whereas the school board commits to creating successful educational outcomes for Native American, Alaska Native, and all indigenous students. Now, therefore, the Yakima School District Board of Directors proclaims June ninth, two thousand twenty-one to be Yakima Nation Treaty Day, and encourages all members of our community to join in celebrating our Native American, Alaska Native, and indigenous students dated this eighteenth day of May, two thousand twenty-one."
Thank you, Superintendent Green. Okay. Next on the agenda are reports from members of the board. Are there any board members who wish to share anything with the rest of the board?
I do have something.
Okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to bring to the attention of the board that the Thirty-Eighth Annual Conference for Natalia will be, is coming up, and it's open for registration. That'll be happening on June twenty-third and twenty-fourth, and that'll be a virtual conference, so. And it is a conference where we'll be able to attend workshops and education, hear from the top leaders in education and other fields as well. I think there's some of the presidents' cabinet members will be there, and senators, and some people from, and also some leaders from the, the House of Representatives as well. So I just wanted to bring that up, and registration is now open on, for that conference as well.
Are you interested in attending, Raymond?
Yes, I would.
Have we already registered you for that?
No.
Okay. Let's have you get with Barb, so that we can get you on the next agenda, because I expect that the registration deadline runs out here pretty quick.
Yes, and I know that Reverend Davis has also attended that conference as well.
You want to be registered too, Don?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So if the two of you could get with Barb and get that on the next agenda for approval, okay? I know that you have really benefited from participating in that conference when it was in person, so I expect that the virtual, everybody's had a lot of practice with virtual stuff this year, so I'll be interested to hear how that went for you. Anything else from other members of the board? Wasda Wassa and AWSP are holding their Equity Conference today and tomorrow. It's, it's in the mornings for these two days. So I was able to, to sit in on this virtual Equity Conference. It's a little unlike Equity Conferences in the past, although there were close to five hundred people registered. Everybody was able to, to listen in to all of the presentations, so everything was essentially large group presentation. This morning's keynote was a young man, I don't know that I remember his last name. First name was Mirko, I believe. He grew up in, I think, New York City, African American, and he shared his lived experience with us, and it was really, really amazing to listen to him talk about his experiences in school and how he, how he overcame the barriers that he faced. He will also be the closing speaker tomorrow around noonish. Also, our friend Mary Furtakis did a presentation on the history we never learned, and it was about how, how a lot of, a lot of history that framed and formed not only Washington State but at the federal level, and, and she touched on other states as well, framed and formed how, how we look at or how society reacts to certain actions that were taken in the past. It was recorded, and I, I think there might be some value if board members are interested in using a board study session to listen, listen or observe that presentation. I think there's, I think there would be some value in it. And I think that's all I have. Mr. Superintendent, you have an update for us?
I may if my mic works. That sounds better.
Yes, it's much better. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Since you mentioned the Equity Conference, I had not planned on sharing this, but as I looked at the agenda, it's interesting that at least I have three of the presenters, our colleagues of Dr. Pimpleton and I in the University of Washington program, and two of the keynotes, Dr. Annie Shimaru and Dr. Anthony Craig are our professors as well. So it's kind of a, it speaks to the quality of that program, and I'm very pleased that we have at least two candidates that will be entering the program this summer. The other announcement that I would share with the board is that Dr. Pimpleton and I did share our equity policy with a large group of educators at the University of Washington over the weekend. We also invited Connor, who is here, Connor Lincoln, Cleo Kuk, and we also had Valeria Garza, who is a freshman here at Eisenhower, that participated in that session. So we're excited about the feedback and the next steps that came from that group, and we will share that document with the board in one-on-one sessions later this week. That's all I have for you today.
Thank you. Next, we have the superintendent's COVID-19 update. Mr. Superintendent.
Yes, I'll pass this directly to Stacy Locke.
Good evening, Board, Superintendent Green, Board of Directors. So the COVID update for this last week, if we go ahead and go to the first slide. As you can see, our investigation, number of investigations that we have been conducting in the Yakima School District has continued to diminish. May tenth through sixteenth, we were down to forty-five, which is the lowest in, in a long time. And so we're pretty excited about that, that the trend is, is very positive. Next slide, please. Also, COVID tests, we had three positives. They were student-only this last week. So again, we're also seeing a decrease in positive COVID tests within the student-staff sections of our district. This is simply a graph chart of what we've seen since January. Asymptomatic testing was up a little bit this last week, with twelve receiving tests, adult staff. Last slide, we're still in the works with the mobile vaccine clinic, and in the next slide, it shows all the places that we will be throughout the, the district from the first of May to the end of May here, and then continuing with the second round of vaccines moving forward. We now have a lot of announcements out throughout the, throughout, through a variety of different mediums that Kirsten and the Communications Department has been working on, so we look for a higher number of people to participate in these activities. May I ask, may I answer any questions?
Any questions from the board?
Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy.
My pleasure to introduce Jewel Brumley, who will give the county COVID update.
Thank you, Stacy. As Stacy said, for Yakima School District, so goes the county, our numbers are down daily case. We had nineteen today, but we've been down to twelve and thirteen, and very low. So another, we had twelve and thirteen on the weekend, and then nineteen. Our rate per hundred thousand is a hundred and sixteen, which is nicely dropped down from the almost two hundred a week ago, and it's still going down. The rate per seven day is fifty-two point seven, so that's really dropped also. Really nice to report when it goes down. The zip code rates dropped in some areas and went up in, in other zip codes, but not very much. For all, it's good. Hospitalizations are down. We had six today with only one intubated. That's nice and smaller positivity rate. I knew it'd take a while to get here, but we're actually below ten percent now, which is a celebration in itself, eight point six percent. And then our school data, we didn't get an update for this last week, but this is from the week before, so. Our school data is still going down, though. And then, so you see the orange line on the forecast is, is the actual numbers, and then my forecast numbers are the blue and the gray. And even though it was off at the beginning, when the things started dropping, they rose a little faster than I thought, but we're now lining up to the bottom of that graph, which is all going downward. So that's really nice to see. Any questions?
Questions from the board? Thank you, Jewel. It's very encouraging to see those numbers going down.
It is.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the monthly financial update.
It's my pleasure to co-present the General Fund Budget and Financial Status Update. I want to thank Becky Neeson, our Executive Director of Finance, for her fine work in preparing this document. As you look at the executive summary, which is the second page, we have three bullet points to share with you, and that is that the Legislative Session awarded emergency transportation funding for twenty and twenty-one, and we were awarded one point one million. This still results, however, in a revenue loss of seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand to support district transportation operations. So we are at a deficit projected with that transportation, even with the one point one million. The second bullet point mentions that Legislative Session awarded enrollment of five hundred per pupil of SIR funding, stabilization funds, of which we did not receive any of that funding because of our status with our Title I schools, so we did not qualify for that, but we did qualify, obviously, for the SIR III funding, which will be a significant resource for us in moving forward. The third bullet point just calls out that our enrollment has continued to decrease. We are currently at two point seven percent below our budget at FTE, and I believe that we are, and Becky, you can correct me, but I think we're about four hundred and thirty-plus down in our enrollment numbers. Is that correct?
You are correct. It's four hundred and thirty-eight FTE.
Wonderful, wonderful. Would you go ahead and continue and take us through the actual charts and final information?
Yes, thank you. So there's, these are your typical slides that we've seen each, each month, and there's really nothing, no anomalies to report to you in any of them, so we're just trending as normal. So the ones that will draw your attention to, of course, is the last couple of slides, unless you have questions about the slides in the middle. So if we just go to the pandemic costs, just give you a quick update there. So we continue to spend money in the cost for distance learning. We're up to six point six million. Our total, if you looked at the last slide, we're up to ten point four as a total, if you go to the last slide, please. Thank you. In expenditures as of April thirtieth. The SIR II that you see on there, we have begun, as our SIR I or our CARES is now depleted, we will now be spending under our SIR II, so I will, we will begin having a slide on that for you. Any questions?
Any questions from board members? Have we begun receiving the SIR, we haven't begun receiving the SIR III money yet, right?
Have not.
Okay.
That application is due by June first.
Yeah, that's on our agenda for tonight.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Becky. Okay. Next item on the comments from the public on agenda items. I believe John Kavanaugh. So nice to see people in person again. I can't begin to tell you.
Good evening, John Kavanaugh. Let's see, twenty-eight, this is my twenty-eighth year in the School District. I'm the Yakima Education President, and tonight I would just like to actually thank the school board for their willingness to take the reopening of our schools at a reasonable pace, following the guidance that was provided by the health experts. It is incredibly beneficial to the well-being of our students and staff. Staying the course as we complete the school year has provided some much-needed stability and consistency for our families of the Yakima School District. WIAA appreciates your leadership in this issue throughout the pandemic. We have fifteen days to go, and we have, there's a lot of training, a lot of things that are happening in the district, planning for opening up and trying to get back to normal and starting off the bang and the fall. Appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, John. That's very kind of you to say that. Just for the benefit of the, of the viewing audience, I think the people in the audience here know this, while we are still in this modified mode, anyone who wishes to make public comment will have had to have notified the Executive Assistant to the Superintendent of their intent and the purpose for that, for that desire to speak to the board prior to tonight's meeting. So we did have two. The other person is speaking at the end of the meeting during our second opportunity for comments from the public. Next on our agenda are, is the Consent Agenda. Purpose of the Consent Agenda is to dispense with one vote routine matters that have been, that are the responsibility of the board to approve. Some of these have been delegated by, by our board to the superintendent, but the approval of these Consent Agenda items lies with the board. Any board member who wishes to do so may ask that any item from the Consent Agenda be removed for separate action and/or discussion. Tonight's Consent Agenda consists of approval of minutes for April twelve, twenty, and twenty-six, approval of President Rice to attend the National School Board Association Equity Symposium, approval of personnel actions, approval of Resolution Number twelve dot twenty dot twenty-one, delegating authority to WIAA. Number six is budget status reports for April two thousand and twenty, and finally, notification of warrants for May two thousand and twenty-one. And tonight, we have one, two groups of ASB warrants, three groups of general fund warrants, and one group of payroll warrants. If there are any board member who wishes to have any item removed from the Consent Agenda, There any board member who wishes to have any item removed from the consent agenda for separate action and/or discussion? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion for approval for, of the consent agenda as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Norm, seconded by Don. Is there any discussion? Graciela?
Martha, the board meeting minutes for Monday, April 26th show me as not attending the meeting, but was attended. I made that correction.
So we will correct those minutes. Can we adjust the motion to reflect that?
Sure.
So the motion would be for the approval of the consent agenda as submitted and corrected.
That sounds fine, yes.
Hold on. Has the, that was brought up.
Is your microphone on, Don?
Pardon?
Is your microphone on?
Yes, it's, it's on.
Okay.
The equity supportium with NSBA, I also actually attend that.
That is scheduled for July. So if you could get a note to Barb, she can get that on our next agenda. Anything else? Don, are you okay with the adjustment to the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Barb, could you, there you are. Could you take the roll, please?
Reverend Dave, Reverend Davis, Jr.?
Aye.
Ms. Vianueva?
Aye.
President Rice?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Navarro, Jr.?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, Barb. Next, we have a list of action items. First action item is the Washington LEA Academic and Student Well-Being Recovery Plan. Trevor, do you want to lead into this or just move to Dr. Darling?
Let's just move straight to Dr. Darling.
Okay.
Thank you, President Rice. As you can see-
There you are. I didn't see you down there.
We're 60 foot social distancing. So as you can see, we've submitted a draft, and the reason it's in draft form is because we were waiting for a final approval of the board to make it a final, a final, a final copy. The majority of this plan that we submitted is a template where we checked, checked a bunch of boxes and filled in a bunch of information regarding demographics. The bottom portion, where we had more flexibility to go into description, actually starts on page 27. And, and actually, this is not an exhaustive list of all that we have planned, but this is a great overview of all the different programs and strategies that the district will be using to accelerate student learning over the next three years in using these ARP funds. This is round three for the ESR funding. And they include tutoring services, after-school programs for students, increasing staffing in the classrooms, and increasing staffing for professional development. As you can see, there's, there's a, our intent is to hire at least 23 more counselors in the district. If there are 23 counselors to be hired, we will snatch every single one of them up. And there's a significant amount of work to be completed. One of the requirements of this plan is that we use an equity tool to analyze our plan. And so first, the plan is approved, and then we have benchmarks throughout the next three years, where we will use this equity tool to analyze how are we doing in the plan, what gaps are we seeing, how we're going to address those gaps moving forward. And so I anticipate that a component of this plan will be brought to the board two or three times over the next school year, as we are required by the OSPI to provide updates and data and that type of information. So unfortunately, this may be the last time you hear from me about it, because next time I think it'll be Dr. Rodriguez. So do you see anything from pages 27 through, basically, page 30, that you have any questions about?
Any questions from board members?
Yeah, I just have one clarification on an acronym. Under the well-being assessments, what is the CEE?
I'm thinking, so CEE is the Center for Educational Excellence. That's the company that we use for our yearly surveys.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I should have spelled that out better.
Any other questions?
So I would, I would submit to the board that we request approval for Yakima School District's Academic and Student Well-Being Recovery Plan, that we could submit this plan to OSPI and the federal government by June 1st, and upon approval of this plan, by then, we will receive our ARP ESR round three funding.
Thank you, Rob. We have before us a request from staff to approve the Washington LEA Academic and Student Well-Being Recovery Plan for the Yakima School District.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Don, seconded by Graciela. Is there any discussion? Norm?
Yeah, I just, I just noticed this in looking through this again. I don't see anywhere in here the healthy youth survey. Is that still part of our practice to do every two years, uneven years?
It is, and, and that survey, we've incorporated components of that survey also in the CEE student survey.
Okay.
So that's part of the student wellness plan that we're going to be incorporating.
Okay. Any other questions or clarifications? It was a pretty comprehensive plan, Rob. Thank you. Okay. It's been moved by Don and seconded by Graciela that the board approve the Washington LEA Academic and Student Well-Being Recovery Plan. Barb, could you please take the roll?
Reverend Davis, Jr.?
Aye.
Ms. Vianueva?
Aye.
President Rice?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Navarro, Jr.?
Aye.
We're going to ask you to use your outdoor voice, too.
Sorry.
That's okay. Either, either that or pull the mask down. Okay. Next item, oh. We were supposed to have public comment on that. Oh, well. Next item on the agenda is approval of resolution 13 point 20 point 21, Academic and Student Well-Being Recovery Plan. This was a suggestion from our legal counsel that we, and from WASDA Legal, that we approve this resolution of this plan and the appropriation of those monies. Bob, here?
Yeah, you set the mic.
Oh, there you are. The mic moved on me this month. I'm sorry. I'm used to doing this.
Good evening. So in order to pass the plan, you have to have public comment. You have to open a period of public comment. So I think we should do that first, and then actually, to formally adopt the plan, you would pass the resolution. So I know you guys have already made a voice, a vote on the plan, but I think we should open it for public comment and then consider the resolution, and then have you vote on the resolution.
Okay, we'll do that. Is there anyone who wishes to make public comment on the Washington LEA Academic and Student Well-Being Recovery Plan? John, come on down.
Tri-Cities has 3,100 students. They have nine counselors. We need clerical help. We're at 500 to 600 at Davis and 400 plus at, at Ike, and it's, they're just, it's crisis management the whole time. They are not actually counseling. I think the funds would be a great time to use to reduce the class size K2 and access the class size money from the state. We are going to get a significant inflow of money, and this is the time to adapt and make those changes, if, if at all possible. I actually got a email from the president of the Walla Walla Association, and with the list of what their board is going to approve. I'm not going to read the whole list to you right now. What I will do is I'll send you that list tomorrow, but it's all about getting more people in front of students. They are going to hire, hire just, and they're a much smaller district than us, but 20 additional certified staff, not counting counselors, just to lower the class size in school, to give the school more options for the next three years with this money there on how to improve and get back our academics. You know, we finally have the money where we can make some changes and make some serious additions and do some great things in the buildings. We've seen a lot in the last two weeks in jobs being posted and filled downtown. Realize most of them were people that were leaving and were, you know, replacing people. The, the jobs I've seen posted in the buildings, I mean, for buildings, for teachers, that kind of stuff, have been replacing people retired, that are retiring or leaving. We need to get on this sooner than later, or there won't be people out there to hire. There won't be those counselors. There won't be those elementary teachers that we need to reduce class size. I was just really hoping the planning, that that is two considerations of the ESR funds we're really looking at. Thank you.
Thank you, John. As Dr. Darling indicated, this is probably not the last time that we're going to see this plan. It will be going through several iterations. So we're going to, we'll take that into consideration. Thank you so much. Is there anyone else who wishes to make public comment on the use of these funds? Okay. If that's the case, I'm going to close public comment and move to approval of the resolution. Now, let's, let's let Bob finish presenting. You just want to go home, Don.
Rob Darling had described to you. So we're asking you approve resolution 13 point 20 point 21, which is the Academic and Student Well-Being Plan. The American Rescue Plan Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief ARP ESR Fund under the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 provides funding for eligible school districts to use to address academic recovery and learning loss, and authorizes the office of the Superintendent of Public Instruction to distribute those ESR funds to Washington School Districts through the Title I Funding Formula. The district must adopt the Academic and Student Well-Being Plan through a resolution following an open public meeting, where the public has opportunity to comment. This resolution would provide for the adoption of the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. I think you've summed up this resolution pretty well. So I don't know unless, unless someone from the board wishes to have it read into the record. I don't know that there's a need for that at this point. Is that all right?
Resolution.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions for Bob on the resolution? Raymond?
I don't know if it's for, for Bob or Dr. Darling, but the doc, the plan that we see here says that an equity, let's see, what was it? Analysis tool was used in the development of the plan, and I'm just wondering how that happened, you know, the process for that. And then later on, beginning on 27, it says that an equity analysis tool will be used. So I'm just kind of wondering about that, if it's, if it was used to develop the plan or if it's going to be used to implement the plan.
Rob, do you want to clarify that?
Yes, so that was one of the questions that we brought up, and that was brought up at one of the last two WASDA calls, was one wording from OSPI says the plan will be used, one wording says would be used prior to, and so they clarified that the plan doesn't, you have to identify the equity tool prior to the plan, but you can use the equity tool to analyze the plan after it's been approved. So the equity tool that I submitted in there is a tool that we will be using as we go through this process to analyze the efficacy and equity issues that come with the plan that we've created.
So as President Rice mentioned, this could change then, right? The plan?
Yes. Yeah, so this will be the first time I'll run to the board, and then there will be, there will be updates that will be required to bring to the board throughout the year next year, probably as soon, as soon as September, October.
Yeah, and if, if the equity analysis tool was required, I was going to ask if the focus that this plan is really focusing on, that were, they were identified in that analysis. But now we know what, that, now, now I know the answer, so I don't have to ask that question. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. We have before us resolution 13 point 20 point 21, Academic and Student Well-Being Recovery Plan Resolution. Staff has asked for our approval. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Don, seconded by Norm. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I just want to clarify, so it says inquiry cycles will take place every six to eight weeks. Does that mean reports to the board or updates to this plan? I'm just kind of, I'm wondering about that as well.
So inquiry cycles are part of our weekly collaboration that the teachers do on their grade level teams. So that's just something they use. They, they look at data from students on a monthly, every six week cycle, so that's something that we use pretty commonly. It's commonly used in education, so it's not a reported item.
Any other questions? Okay. Been moved by Don and seconded by Norm that the board approve resolution 13 point 20 point 21, Academic and Student Well-Being Recovery Plan. Barb, could you call the roll, please?
Junior?
Aye.
Ms. Vianueva?
Aye.
President Rice?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Navarro, Jr.?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, Barb. Next, we have approval to purchase 1,000 Dell laptops.
Yes, and I'll go ahead and pass this directly to Andy Gonzalez. Thank you for being here, Andy.
Thank you. Superintendent Green, RCW 28 dot 335 dot 19 requires the board to solicit bids for items or work that exceed $75,000. However, RCW 39 point 34 allows districts to purchase items and services from established in our local agreements. These laptops will be purchased through the Washington State Department of Enterprise Services contract. The purpose of these laptops is to replace end-of-life computers distributed during the pandemic closure. We ask that the board grant permission to purchase 1,000 Dell 3310 two-in-one laptops from Dell Technologies totaling $870,223.12.
Thank you, Andy. Are there any questions from the board? Staff has asked for permission to purchase 1,000 Dell laptops 31, 3310 two-in-one laptops from Dell Technologies totaling $870,223.12.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Raymond, seconded by Don. Is there any discussion? This is kind of the story of our life this year, isn't it? Okay. If there's no discussion, Barb, could you call the roll, please?
Reverend Davis, Jr.?
Aye.
Ms. Vianueva?
Aye.
President Rice?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Navarro, Jr.?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, Barb. Next, we have approval to purchase network equipment and licenses.
Yeah, Andy?
RCW 28 eight point 335 point 190 requires the board to solicit bids for items or work exceeding $75,000. However, the WISIPSE purchasing program allows schools to leverage the power of the WISIPSE Cooperative to provide competitively bid goods and services in compliance with Washington State- Washington State Procurement RCWs. This purchase, this purchase supports the district's effort to provide greater equitable access and opportunities for our students. We request that the Board of Director grants permission to purchase networking equipment and licensing equipment for the District Gemini Student Access Network in the amount of $1,570,292.61.
Thank you, Andy. Is, are there any questions for Andy? Okay, staff has asked for, that the board grant permission to purchase networking equipment and licensing for the District Gemini Student Access Network in the amount
So moved.
Moved by Don, seconded by Graciela. Are there, is there any discussion?
Maybe not for, maybe not an answer now, but what would be all the locations, probably too many to list, right, of these access points, I guess?
Every district campus would be able, would be broadcasting and is already broadcasting. This is just the expanded greater reach broadcasting. And, and then we would, are working with various partners to establish coverage areas that, where we don't have campuses. And so a list can be provided to the board on request.
Sure. Thank you.
That might be helpful for the board to have that information, Andy. Thank you. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the board purchase the necessary networking equipment and licenses for the District Gemini Student Access Network in the amount of
So moved.
I thought, I thought we did that already.
It was already moved.
So if there's no further discussion. Barb?
Reverend Davis Jr.
Aye.
Ms. Villanueva.
Aye.
President Rice.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Navarro Jr.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, thank you, Barb. Next, we have approval of a legislative proposal, universal free school meals. The board has had a chance to review this last week, I think. This was a proposal that we were asked for our support from our friends in the Bethel School District. The deadline for submittal was last Friday. However, we were able to indicate to them that we were pending approval, and I'll be sure to let the Legislative Committee know this weekend when we meet, the outcome of our vote here tonight. Are there any questions from board members about this proposal? Okay. And I would request approval of legislative proposal, universal free school meals.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Graciela, seconded by Don. Is there any discussion? I just wanted to point out that the U.S. Department of Agriculture has been providing free school meals across this country since last spring, sometime, some March, I think. And our district has been able to provide free school meals for our, our students for close to 10 years now through the CEP program. And we have had, we have had great success with that. We know that there is a certain type of, what's the word I want? I can't think of the word. Anyway, there's, there's, there's a certain hesitancy on the part of secondary students to indicate that they have a need for free, free or reduced school meals. And when we joined the CEP program, that went away because everybody got to eat. And the participation in our meals program just skyrocketed. So I think, I think this would be a good option for pursuit at the, at the federal level. And that's what this proposal would entail. We have a motion and a second. Barb, could you read the roll, please?
Reverend Davis Jr.
Aye.
Ms. Villanueva.
Aye.
President Rice.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Navarro Jr.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you all. I'll be sure to let Bethel know that we approve this this evening. Next, we have approval of the Yakima Maintenance Association Yakima School District Agreement.
Yes, and for a report on that, I've asked Assistant Superintendent Anthony Marietta to please fill us in. Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you, Madam President. The requested action is that the Board of Directors approves the agreement between the Yakima Maintenance Association and the Yakima School District. Bargaining with the Yakima Maintenance Association was completed and has resulted in a new agreement that includes a 2020 through 2023 school years. 2021 increases the base salary of 2.5%. The 2021, 2022 increase of a base of 2% or state IPD funded, whichever is greater. 2022, 23 increase of a salary of, increase of 1.5% or state funded IPD, whichever is greater. Membership of the Yakima Maintenance Association voted on April 20th, 2021 to ratify the collective bargaining agreement as amended through the tentative agreement reached between the two bargaining teams during the course of bargaining. The district bargaining team is now seeking to approve, seeking approval of the Board of Directors. I'd also like to thank the YABZ bargaining team, Bill Heigl, Kyle Sopich, Bruce Thompson, and Dusty Vickers, as well as the district's bargaining team of Manuel Roscoe, Stephanie Arnold, and Carrie Chapman.
Thank you, Anthony. Please add our appreciation to those two groups of folks for working on this for, for you.
Thank you very much. I will.
Are there any questions on the agreement from board members? Okay, I would entertain a motion for approval of the Yakima Maintenance Association and Yakima School District Agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Don, seconded by Raymond. Is there discussion? Barb, could you call the roll, please?
Reverend Davis Jr.
Aye.
Ms. Villanueva.
Aye.
President Rice.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Navarro Jr.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, Barb. Our last action item for the night is permission to enter into an intergovernmental cooperative purchasing agreement with the Washington State Department of Enterprise Services.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Marietta?
Thank you again. The requested action is that the Board of Directors grants permission to the Purchasing Department to enter into an intergovernmental cooperative purchasing agreement with the Washington State Department of Enterprise Services for their energy program. The Enterprise Services through its energy program assists owners of public facilities, in this case, school districts, to reduce energy and operational costs. By entering into an interlocal agreement with the state, we can take advantage of their professional expertise and contract management to improve facilities and achieve efficiencies with our HVAC systems. And this, this is allowed through RCW 39.34 and RCW 39.5C.
Thank you, Anthony. Are there any questions for Anthony on this? Okay, I would entertain a motion for permission to enter into an intergovernmental cooperative purchasing agreement with the Washington State Department of Enterprise Services.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Don, seconded by a chorus. Norm?
Yes.
Is there any discussion? Okay, Barb, could you read the roll, please?
Reverend Davis Jr.
Aye.
Ms. Villanueva.
Aye.
President Rice.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Navarro Jr.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, Barb. We've reached the second opportunity for comments from the public. We do have one individual who indicated they wish to speak to the board tonight, and Alec?
Regenball? Can you hear me?
Where are you?
I'm attending virtually.
Ah.
Hi there. I'm sending everything.
I was going to say, it's good to see you, but we can't do that either, huh?
Sorry.
Go ahead, Alec.
My microphone keeps getting turned off here. Okay, I'll try to, I'll keep this brief. It's, it's been a long meeting. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Alec Regenball. I am the Legislative Assistant to Davis Graduate and State Representative Jeremy Defoe of Washington's 15th Legislative District. He really wanted to be here tonight, but unfortunately, he is on Army Reserve Duty this week. And tonight, he was bouncing back and forth between Marysville and JBLM in Olympia and didn't think that he would be able to get back on base in front of his computer in time to come before you tonight. He sends his regrets and asks me to come in his stead and touch base with you all. If you don't know, the legislative session ended last month on the 25th, and it was unprecedented in every way. The entire session was held virtually. That means constituent meetings, committee hearings, voting on the House floor. All of that stuff was done through Zoom. And for those of you who in years past were brave enough to make the trek from Yakima to Olympia during those late winter, early spring months when past conditions were a little dicey, I'm sorry that we weren't able to see you in person this year, but I hope to see you in person next year. As far as school districts go, the effort on the state level was to restabilize districts and help them overcome the barriers that were erected by the COVID-19 pandemic. The one item that Representative Defoe wanted me to mention specifically were those transportation funds that Superintendent Green mentioned earlier in the meeting. Those funds were critically needed as school districts around the state expanded their transportation services for students in the, during the last few months. I'm sorry to hear that you are still in a deficit, but it's probably some consolation to know that you can still get good wins on the state level. I also wanted to come before you tonight to let you know that even though the legislative session is over, that doesn't mean we're going anywhere. We represent you guys full-time. Once this meeting is concluded, I will send you all an email with my contact information and Representative Defoe's contact information. And I would urge you to use that whenever you want to talk, whenever you have a question, or whenever you need any sort of help in relation to state government. I am by no means an expert in everything that's going on at the state legislature, but I'd be happy to attempt to answer any questions you might have. And if I'm unable to answer them now, I'd be happy to get back to you later this week with an email or a phone call and an answer to your question. And thank you very much for allowing me to come and speak to you tonight and then take up some of your time.
Thank you, Alec. It's good to hear your voice. For those of you who don't know, Alec was the education reporter at the Herald a few years ago. Please thank for, thank for us or from us, Representative Defoe, for his service and tell him that we missed him tonight.
Will do. Thank you all very much for, for your service. This is not the latest I've ever been at a Yakima School Board meeting, but it's, it's getting up there. So thank you all very much.
Well, we're, we're not going to try to break a record tonight, though. I'm telling you that right now. Thank you, Alec. Okay, we've reached the, the end of our agenda. Mr. Superintendent, do we have a need for executive session?
We do not have a need for an executive session.
Thank you very much. If there's nothing else for the good of the order, we are adjourned. Thank you all for hanging in there with us. I know this was a very long night, and we very much appreciate your interest and your attendance this evening.